All right, it is 5:15 on March 21st, 2023. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Jean, you want to do a roll call?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Bielefeld?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Thank you.
We have all received an agenda. Don't think there's any additions, deletions, or anything. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson over that side?
Yeah.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And you can either state your conflicts at this time, or as we go along, if you have any conflicts with any of the items on the agenda.
Mayor, I will go ahead and abstain from item 3C on the agenda in regards to the law enforcement 28E agreement, possible action item.
I'll also do that.
All right, under the consent agenda, these items are all under one motion and vote. The minutes of the March 7th, 2023 council meeting and the March 9th, 23 public forum. Claims list number 1286, the amount of $98,029.65. And on that, we all received the higher amounts.
Which is much appreciated to put that in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the highest one was the crane truck that we're purchasing from county. Also, the expenditure revenue reports for the month of February 2023. Police statistical report for the month of February 2023. HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for January and February of '23. Renewal application for Hy-Vee doing businesses, Hy-Vee Wine &amp; Spirits Class E Retail Alcohol License. A renewal application for BW Gas and Convenience Retail, doing business as Yesway, number 1,009, Class E Retail Alcohol License. And a renewal application for the Veterans Moral Auditorium Commission of Harlan for Class E Retail Alcohol License. Any discussion or questions, anything about any of those? Now I'd ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion to Lindberg, close second to Rudolph.
Who is the second?
Rudolph.
Okay. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under other business, first one is review proposal for North Fourth Street Bridge Evaluation, structure study and replacement options. Jean, you said we got a few spokes on line?
Yes. For those that, this was at a previous Streets and Alley meetings. It's a structure in Fourth and Main. For the last few winters, as you all know, we've closed it. Just due to structural issues. It's a bridge that's been there for many decades. And it's in a waterway. So to evaluate options for replacing that structure, need to have a survey as well as hydraulic analysis for all the water drains from the north tributary. And also within that to provide replacement options and estimated costs. Snyder &amp; Associates is a proposal that had provided, actually a year and a half, two years ago. And then we did not do anything with that. We do have money allocated from our ARPA funds towards projects such as this. And I believe Dave, if you're on the line from Snyder, if you just want to highlight the services, if you're there, Dave, and can hear us.
Yep, I can hear you, Jean. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Council, for having us. With me online here is Adam Bullerman, who does the hydraulic work, and Steve Coons, who is our structural engineer on this project. So if you have any specific questions about those phases of it, please don't hesitate to ask. But as Jean mentioned, we plan to do the field survey on this project, which we would also then use in the design of the structure. We look at the hydraulic flow through this street and its way. The hydraulic analysis will help us determine the flood elevations, which would be used in the design and permitting of this project. And then item three of our tasks would be the bridge type evaluations, where we could look at different structure types that could be used across this creek and potentially even look at a culvert if it would fit. And then also compare those costs and see what fits best with the site as well as with the costs allocated for this project. So we would be happy to answer any questions you guys do have about the project or even about the process and how we proceed with this, if you have any specific questions.
Dave, this is Jean. Could you speak or reference more as to why the hydraulic analysis is needed? Because that's a larger portion of the cost.
Certainly. Adam, could you assist with that question?
Sure, thank you. Adam Bullerman, Snyder &amp; Associates, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard, Ankeny, Iowa. Mainly what we're looking at here is we'll go through a process of analyzing alternatives for an appropriate replacement, whether it be a bridge or culvert or some other type of arch type structure is kind of our typical. But we need to follow regulations in terms of standard practice for hydraulic design of bridges, which follow DOT standards. So in that case, we would need to develop a hydraulic model of the existing conditions as well as conditions where there's no bridge in place. So that way, we can identify if our alternatives or our solutions back up any more water in the creek. So in this case, we would use those models then to evaluate those alternatives. And then down the road, if we do turn this into a project, we're going to use those for permitting. For say, if you were to use like DOT money, you know, then they're going to require a hydraulic analysis to review. And that would all be part of that future phase, construction phase, per se. Mainly, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to back up any more water than what's out there, considering that we do have some, you know, potential restrictions downstream on the fairgrounds where the ditch switches to the east side of the road. We want to make sure that we're accounting for any sort of backwater or anything from those other driveway entrance holes.
And also just restate that at the previous, at one of the streets meetings, we'd had parties that used that area quite frequently. Because one of the considerations was, as you may recall, was to consider closing that structure and just no longer making that a through street on Fourth Street. And I believe we had folks from the Fair Board, we'd come also with Speedway, Soccer, others that use that area. And with the growth of activity in that area, it was, I believe it was recommended from the committee to look at what would replacement look like versus closing that area for our community. And again, the cost of this proposal was $27,450. And again, that would be used budgeted funds for engineering this year within our road use tax as well as a portion of the ARPA money allocated for stormwater. We've covered that expense.
Any questions, concerns, Snyder or Jean? And I would ask for a motion to proceed with this proposal.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks, Dave and Jean. You're welcome to stay on or certainly understand if you got other activities this evening.
All right, thank you, Jean. Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Dave.
Good evening.
Next up is review the library collection librarian job description.
Sent out information, the library board had approved this. It's within their responsibility. Received final council blessing. Due to the upcoming retirement in the library, Amanda and the team restructured some tasks based upon skills. I'm saying some of them more technology and technical related with this position. So this is in front of you just more or less for a matter of procedure. And Sharon Reed noted your correction.
I got an email back from Amanda, so, yeah. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about that change? Is there a motion then to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Close second.
Motion by Bielefeld, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Bielefeld?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up then is the discussion and possible action to approve a 28E agreement to share law enforcement services with Shelby County Sheriff. I think we received that information. You guys have a chance to all look that over. Any questions, concerns, anything that wanted to discuss at this time? Then I would open it up at this time to any questions to the public, from the public. When I say that, I would say we'd probably limit, kind of like we did the other night, three minutes. I appreciate everybody being respectful to the time and to people in the room. And we're not going to discuss, you know, questions about personnel, all that kind of stuff. But if you have questions about what this is and what this means, and would like to come to the podium, please, and state your name and see if we can answer any questions you might have.
My name is Amy Haas. My question is, what is the price that we are paying for the safety of our families? What is the price? Because right now, because of this discussion that was not brought to the public until two weeks ago, not even two weeks ago, I am missing an event for my daughter. Because her safety and the safety of my family are more important. So what is the price that we are going to pay for this unification? And how many voices are you going to listen to? Because I do have here a petition for the community voicing their opinion about it. And I will give it to Jean.
Are you asking a number, a price number? I mean, is it a hypothetical question about?
It's hypothetical, yes. But what is the price of a life for this unification? How are we going to know that? No offense to the county, I love you guys. I know about half of you. But if there's something going on at Erling Major, that means whoever's running the streets here has to go help. There's the diversion for Harlan to be an absolute attack.
I think that's been in place for, since we started law enforcement in the county and in the city. I think that, you know, we can all have the hypotheticals as far as what if, what if, what if? What if that happened five years ago? What if that happened 10 years ago? It would have been, it was taken care of. It hasn't happened. If it happens tomorrow, it'll be taken care of. I look at this as, you know, people keep saying, you know, options, options, options. The options, we have option A, continue to do what we've done. And I think, you know, we've done that for the past couple of years because we had some changes with leadership. We tried to maintain, we tried to, the pride. I got more pride than, I'm not saying I do more than you, but I believe in this community. I believe in the people that have been there and done it and still do it. That was option one. We've done that. The next option is what we're looking at tonight is option two. Everybody seems to see there's an option B, C, three. We don't have that. We don't have a third option to do. And you say, yes, you know, all the faith in the law enforcement and the sheriff's department. I do too. That's why I would support this. Now, I'm not doing, I'm not supporting this to downplay what we've had, but we can't continue to maintain because of just the nature of what law enforcement is right now, trying to hire and retain. And that's not just Harlan, that's not just Shelby County, that's not just the state of Iowa. That is nationwide. So, I mean, I think that's a dramatic statement to talk about a life. And I get that, but I think we have that option to give you, you know, comfort in what's going forward with the option we're presenting tonight.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
So I'd answer it this way, too. I think they all have their mutual, was it mutual A agreement? That pretty much if something happens to the county, our city policemen are going to go with the county. That's just kind of what they do. If you have two events, then they'll have to figure out how to manage the deployment officers that way, right? I mean, they do it currently now. If there's something that happens outside of the county, and I think it goes both ways, the county will come in here if there's something going on at the same time. So that's been explained to us how that currently works and how it would work in the potential future for an agreement.
Okay, so a follow-up question to that would be, instead of having them apply to the sheriff's office, why not absorb them? Why not absorb the city police department? Why do they have to put in for an application? Others who have done this have absorbed their city police department. They don't make them do an application.
Want me to speak to that just briefly? From a matter of policy and hiring policy at the county and also at the recommendation of both and guidance from both legal councils, legal councils from the county and the city, is that is the proper way to do it, the recommended way to do it. And we also offer that, spoken to at the public meeting, that based upon the number of positions, all the officers in the city of Harlan, that there is more capacity for positions than there are current officers. So unless there was something, you know, there's no guarantees, right? But unless there was something totally outside the norm, and Sheriff, feel free to speak in here if I'm not, if I'm missing something, that should be highly unlikely. But it's a matter of hiring policy as well as guidance from our council attorneys.
So I did some digging. I had to dig pretty hard. 60 Minutes came to Harlan years ago. I believe it was 35, 40 years ago. They did an exposé. I may be wrong on my ears. Harlan was the drug capital of the U.S. And that was one of the reasons why the city police department was established, if I'm remembering correctly my information. So what happens if we become the drug capital of the U.S. again?
Harlan Police Department was established back in 1800s. As far as enforcement and coverage, as the sheriff alluded to with the coverage plan and also what is a minimum for the city of Harlan, there will be continued dedicated coverage for our citizens with a similar one is now in advance. And as far as with continued oversight, oversight investigation of things such as used drug capital, I don't think it's going to be any different with one way or the other if you had two agencies or one agency. They're going to continue to look into those items and help ensure that we don't become a drug capital.
My last question is, is are you going to listen to the community when they stand up and say, "We do not want this"? Or are you just going to say, "You elected us to make a decision for you"?
Well, I would address, in that part of it, I guess I have listened. I have had numerous people talk to me face to face, you know? And I would say they are supportive of what we're thinking about doing. You know, I've heard negative too, but, I mean, we have listened. You know, it is one of those things that, and I would guess the majority of the people on this council have heard from people outside of this room and outside of the public forum, you know, many times. And I've had, I mean, lots and lots of conversations. So, I mean, we are listening.
And we are elected officials. We're not just a random group of people. We are elected officials. Our name was on a ballot and we were elected to these positions to make those decisions. Is this an easy decision? No, it's not. And that's why I said, you know, you elected us. We have a decision to make. I was just wanting to make sure that you're actually listening to the people. Because I think we all see it time after time after time. People are elected and nobody gets hurt.
Hi, my name is Steve Davis. Most of you know me. First, I want to say I have utmost belief that if the sheriff's department does take this over, Amy, you don't have to worry about your kids. It's going to be every bit as good as it is now as far as safety. It won't be as personal. I can assure you of that. They're going to have 16, 17 officers. We had eight. We got to know people. We went on the calls with the people. It was very personal. And when you have 17 people, you don't get to know them. I've been out of it for two years now and I might know one of the officers now. Because they're so, they're all new. What happens if you have a good department to keep people for a long time? The public gets to know them and it becomes personal. And that's what I think Frank was alluding to. We provided a service that was personal. They were our friends, they were our neighbors. But I can assure you that with the sheriff's department, it will not be bad service. You will have very good coverage. It's always worked out. They go to an emergency in Erling or Elkhorn. Trust me. You can trust these guys are going to do a good job. I have complete faith in them. My question, first one is, I'm assuming there was a public safety meeting or sometime, something in between our forum last Thursday and tonight to get to this point? And if so, this meeting is publicized on the city's website, on Twitter, Facebook. We saw that, I think something this big should have been brought to the attention and given to people the opportunity to speak at that meeting or to hear the process of how that happened. And I know there's committee meetings and there's probably ways I couldn't have known had I come up and looked at the brochures on the entranceways. But I did, and I was expecting to notify or to find out about that the same way I found out about the meeting Thursday and the meeting tonight. And I don't think you, I don't think anybody deliberately hid that, but I wish you would have been more transparent and let the people know that this meeting was going to, or that that meeting was going to happen and give us the opportunity to be there. I'm disappointed that we weren't able to be there. That being said, I know you made your decision. You know what you're doing. I trust your decision. I'm totally against it, as I said last week. One of my main concerns is you believe it'll save money. I made a few calls today and I already come up with about $40,000 or $50,000 that's not accounted for in how you were going to do it before with the enforcement officer. And most of it stems from using that building over there. They're going to put a new meter in for utilities. The city's going to have to pay some cost to maintain that building. There was a line item for building maintenance and all that kind of stuff that adds up. That wasn't included in the talk last week. The revenue that the police department made, and I'm not 100% sure on what that number is, but I would say somewhere around $50,000 each year that they made from tickets, from the clerk of court payback, from vehicle inspections. And that money went and paid for, a lot of the vehicle inspections paid for our reserve program. And through that paid for a lot of the ammunition that was very expensive. We went through a period where ammunition was very high. That was revenue that was generated, or some of it, from the police department. We won't have a police department, so we're going to lose that revenue. So right from the start, we haven't even started it yet and I found $50,000 to $60,000 that's not accounted for in what was said last week. So, and like I said, it looks good on paper, but when it goes out, it doesn't really work.
Anyone else have any questions?
I would just offer, thank you, Steve, for the comments and items. What was stated at the public meeting and, so the cost savings, this is, the term used is cost neutral. This is not being done out of a cost savings initiative. There's not anticipated to be any impact to taxes. Again, that's pending if we were that code enforcement position. But in terms of just the pure expense side of things, Steve, the north or beyond $100,000 of current expense savings just on the expense line item.
Is that with the code enforcement?
No.
So with the code enforcement?
It would be more cost neutral.
Correct. So it would be neutral if we do the code enforcement? And that's what you said last week, that we would have a code enforcement officer? So we'd be negative, correct?
There would be revenue generated through that activity as well, right? Through citations and fines in that regard. And also, it would be yet to be determined. At least initially, we're not looking to do vehicle inspections. But that's, I wouldn't ever discount that completely. But that's not intended out of initially if this plan will be formed.
And were they going to get a federal meter for electricity? For utilities?
Yeah, in the agreement, the county will lease the space, I think was spoken to at the meeting, that essentially operated out of two locations and included in like, similar to other landlord leases. Baseball, what all is included in that lease? So maintenance utilities wouldn't be included in that lease amount. That's factored into the net amount in the agreement. Does that help?
Yep.
Tim Miller, I'm here as a citizen, not necessarily an employee of the city, although I'm not full into on that side. I 100% agree with Steve Davis on the fact that the sheriff's department has been doing an amazing job. Upmost respect for what you guys do in the county and all that right now. And also kudos to the Harlan Police Department for what they've done for us over the last two years and beyond that. But for the amount of hours that you guys are working and taking care of us now. Thank you very much for all of that. Just a concern is, everybody's a little fractured right now. Relationships are really frayed. And this is helping break that. Amy, how many signatures were on that petition?
I believe I had 250.
250 signatures.
There's more out there.
There's more out there than that. Everybody said you've heard people in favor of it. I haven't heard one person in favor of it. It's more, like Steve talked about, is the relationship with the police department and that. We've done some things that were, within the city, we've lost relationships with other departments, with HMU going to safety meetings together and that. We've lost camaraderie with them. We work pretty close with the PD on certain items. And I know we'll get to know you guys and that. But it's just a little bit easier when you don't have so many to get to know. It's also pretty concerning what's happening in-house with our own team philosophy and feeling like a department is going to be dismembered by one vote when it takes putting up a no parking sign, three votes. I know that's how it works, you know? It's just, you don't vote for president three times, right? And all of that stuff. But it's just a little concerning for us as employees on how the PD employees are being treated. We know some might not want to go over to the sheriff's department. We're going to do nothing for them. We're going to kick them out the door as a city. Thanks, but no thanks. Makes us as employees kind of feel like we get told we're appreciated, but aren't we really? So we need to take care of ourselves. This is the easy answer, the sheriff's department. And it's not an easy answer. I understand that. The hard answer is to rebuild the police department. Sometimes the easy answer isn't always the right one. Sometimes the easy answer isn't always the right one. If this vote does go through, I genuinely look forward to working with the Sheriff's Department and getting to know those guys. I just know me myself would like to see city employees taken care of and know that they are special. Now, those guys sacrificed a lot, and it just kind of feels like maybe we're not really taking care of the guys that put their lives on the line for us. So, thank you. I understand your tough decision and that, so thanks for your time.
So Jay didn't really mention option C, because yes, it's a gut-wrenching discussion topic to talk about. Option C, we don't do nothing, sell four police officers, leave, go find jobs elsewhere. Down the department, zero, maybe one, I guess, please chief. So that's the option C. And that's the tough part, deciding on which way is potentially the right way to go. Not easy, by the way, because yes, it involves people's livelihoods.
Neil, how many of your current employees worked for the city in the past? Or your current deputies?
At least five of them.
Okay.
And how many, remind me how many of our Harlan officers have already switched over to the Sheriff's Department?
That's right, that's...
That was five?
Yeah, it was five, yep.
Nope?
Yep, recently, in the past less than three or four years. Three years.
Was that not on the announcement when Steve Davis and Frank Clark decided to announce their retirement? Was that around that time?
We had hired several before that as well. But post that time, Amy, we hired another four or five.
Any other questions? Anybody up here have anything else to discuss?
I mean, the other part would be, you know, let people know, yeah, there's, within governments, you all have these subcommittees, and yes, they have a lot of meetings. Are they open to the public? Not necessarily, because they don't meet the open law requirements. So there's a lot of subcommittee meetings that go on. It's where a lot of discussions happen. So let people know that wasn't, the discussion wasn't spur of the moment. So discussions have obviously been going on for a while to research, to ask questions, think of options, lay it out and kind of see what's, what are the potential outcomes or other avenues to pursue. So happens all governments, not just our own, but just kind of let people know it's not a spur of the moment. May have felt like a spur of the moment to put on the public invite that evening, but the group kind of thought that is, subcommittees have been meeting long enough that it's time to at least present the information to the public. And the challenge is, yes, we have a lot of people that will come and say yes or no, whether they'll talk to you in person, sign a document saying they're for or against, and it's always a challenge. Challenging part is making the decision and holding people accountable for making the decision, because some decisions are not easy by any means. So it's a pros and cons approach. And it's got a personal touch, because it is with our own city department and our city employees.
Amy Hossigan, sorry. I will stand here and ask for the council to give the community more time. Actually, here for community, please.
What are we going to do for those officers today? We have four officers.
We need to stand by them.
I understand that, and we, and we're doing that.
And right now, that's all that we can do.
But they're going to be walking out the door in two weeks. They are worked to the bone.
And I understand that.
Okay.
Then have volunteers. Where's our reserves?
You can't, you can't just put someone in a position. It'd be like me as a citizen going out and saying, I'm going to play cop today.
Where is our reserves?
Part-time people.
What happened to our reserves? That is an honest question. Where's the reserves?
Gene, can you answer that?
Yeah, we're currently relying on one, actually, two of the reserves. They also have full-time jobs, so they're helping fill in gaps. We've had one additional part-time that is working darn near full-time. We're blessed, but he's got some off-time in the winter, so that's helped him nicely. And then, I think it's important, so does that answer your question? Please tell me.
Somewhat.
I know a few of the officers are here, so I will not put them, but a majority of the existing department that are working to protect our citizens are in support of providing one unified command, one unified set of procedures, one unified way of protecting the public. I appreciate very much what Steve Davis said. I think the word was, you know, less personal, or maybe not as personal. And I won't sit here and blow smoke and or guarantee things, yet with stronger retention through a larger agency and some of the benefits are intended. My hope and intent is, and I'm sure these elected officials, is that within a few years or five years, that that level of personalization because of the consistency of the officers and deputies will be achieved. Again, I can't say you're promising guarantee that, yet you're looking at the sheriff there. I know he desires that. That's, but again, I think it's important. I appreciate what Tim Miller said, which we spoke to at the public meeting, that pass off to those that have been on our current team, definitely appreciation, yet they're looking forward to changing. So waiting another two months or evaluating for a year. I echo what Sharon said. It's one direction or the other.
So how many applications have you yourself looked at?
Have I myself? I've not looked at any. I'm aware of the ones we've had, but that's kind of with, I normally wouldn't look at department applications.
Are you the city administrator, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes.
You're above the city police department, correct?
As well as the other departments, yes.
So you can hire in your position, correct?
Yes.
So you do look at the applications?
I look at my street superintendent here, and I'm not routine to look at the applications he's hiring to fill in his department. So similar to, if that's what you're getting at, I'm not sure what you're...
Why, why are you not looking at any of the applications that have come in?
We've got many recent applications.
When was the last application that came in?
My understanding was back in either January or early February, but I don't know that for sure.
Any other questions? If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve the 28E agreement with law enforcement services to Shelby County Sheriff.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Noted abstain vote from Beilenberg and Lindberg.
Thank you, everybody, for being here for that item.
This would need to be...
Passed on to...
Need to be concurred with the court supervisors. And my last understanding is they have a meeting, already scheduled meeting for a week from today. I don't know if they have another meeting before then, but I don't believe so.
Tim?
It requires our concurrence. Anything different on that?
No, I believe they're going to, if it was passed today at your council meeting, maybe on board supervisor's meeting for next Tuesday to look at. So a week from today.
Next up, we have the resolution 2522, setting a time and place for a public hearing date of April 4th of 2023, for purpose of considering the maximum tax dollars from certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year 2324 budget.
This was on the agenda earlier, and then we postponed it due to the fact that valuations changed due to legislative changes. And so we, we postponed that public hearing, and we are, we're needing to reset it. Valuations did come in lower, like we were told they were going to. And so this max levy has changed a little bit. There is a decrease with these included levies, which aren't all of our levies, a decrease of 6.45%. Last time it was a decrease of two. So a little bit more of a decrease. This is one of the requirements before we pass our annual budget, is to pass this max levy first.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2522?
Motion? Second?
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Item E, ordinance number 2023-2, pending chapter 69.8 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Harlan pertaining to no parking zones. Changes include no parking on the east side of 19th Street between Durant and Willow between the hours of 12:03 and 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday during the school calendar year. This is just the third and final reading. We've had this on a couple times before, so. Any other input or questions to you guys in the office about this? No?
I've not received any other questions or feedback. I don't think any others have come to City Hall.
I would look for a motion to approve ordinance 2023-2.
Motion.
Second? Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven?
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
And I would just comment, you know, just notice to the public that we'll think it'd be good because of this high-traffic area, you know, 10 days post this, I think it's 10 days post this, final reading and adoption is when it would...
And it has to be published in the paper, which it will be sent.
So Jeff, I guess look to you for a moment, that, you know, I believe the intent would be get these up this spring yet. I guess we'd have to get order with the final wording. But just awareness to the public that when they do get posted, we'll look to push that on Facebook to create awareness.
I'm sure the school would share it as well, too, with parents and everybody if we pick up.
As long as I got the wording down right, then I can go ahead and get an order.
How long does that take, Jeff, to get them, very long?
Um, just depending where I go through. If I go through town signs, they get them a lot quicker. Iowa prisons usually takes a little longer, you know, just on how fast you want. Price difference ain't that much.
Just FYI to council and the public to be aware of that when, look to get them posted this spring. High-traffic area and a lot of youth activity up there, so.
Lots of little people running around. Next up then, we need to receive and file the insurance committee minutes from March 8th of 2023. Is there a motion to receive and file those minutes?
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Kroger, second by, is it Beilenberg over here?
Sure.
Yep. Sorry, Neil.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
From that meeting, we need to review recommendations of renewed property and casualty and workers' comp insurance with EMC. There was a little bit of increase in that.
Little bit of a what?
Increase?
Decrease? Insurance did not go down.
Do you ever say decrease when you say insurance?
For those on that committee, there are representatives from HMU, as we do share pooled insurance for both our property as well as health and medical side. The agency, branch TV, highlighted all the changes. We literally went by coverage, area of coverage, and again, this is our property casualty work comp coverage areas for our medical and health. That'll be reviewed later this month. And the overall aggregate was around a 10% increase, very by-line of coverage. And I think original, we were thinking maybe in the mid-15s. And contributing factors are no different than if you, if you read some of the other trends that are going on, but continued weather events in the Midwest have driven up claims. And again, that impacts all insurers. We got a rising cost of materials. So the cost we build today or something damaged and needs replaced is, so inflation, higher cost of goods and materials contribute to that as well. And then on the, in terms of some of our cyber coverage, as well as other coverage, was referred to as social inflation and all the social activities that go on and even are less civil times. So we read insurance articles and talked about the social impacts to that on insurers as well. Not near as big of impact as far as weather events and cost of goods and materials, but those are some driving factors and similar to others that require that coverage. On a, on a good note, we're on the, we're on a good, on a good three-year trend of our work comp. And our work comp dropped down below .9, I think it's .85. Again, one, you know, a one is means that you're, one is even if you have work comp claims, and this revolves around safety. So we have ongoing safety meetings. There's that safety culture and awareness helps tremendously. So we're on a good three-year cycle of claims, and that had a positive impact on our work comp, what's called the mod factor. I guess any other comments that anyone else wants to make from the insurance committee meeting, if you wanted to highlight that for the rest of the council?
No, Brendan, excellent job presenting and had data and everything proven to us and shown, so, I mean, it was pretty well laid out. It's about the name of the game, especially on the cybersecurity insurance, because as we discussed in that meeting too, we're going to start seeing a lot of multi-factor authentication coming in, which is going to be a requirement for that insurance and stuff. So the new pipeline with, the newer technology and all the social studies would be the experts, your so-called hackers are going to become more available to accessing your stuff. So, like you said, it's coming too, so, but nope. All is good.
Okay, so a motion to renew the recommendation?
Motion?
Second?
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven?
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to city administrators' report.
For, I just do a few highlights tonight. Couple airport activities previously reported. We had an interested individual from called Jump Omaha that has been interested in holding a skydiving event this fall out at the airport. And gone through, gone back and forth with that individual with the airport commission and actually agreed to, or at least a lease agreement, to actually rent or lease a part of the ground. It'd be October 5th through the 8th, if this goes through. Could be a neat event for the community, where there would be skydivers out there and even offering tandem jumps. Jump Omaha. And we've had our attorney, as well as insurance...
I'm scared.
...give us guidance on that. So issued that this morning with the airport commission and already sent that off to this Jump Omaha group. Happy to report that with our new sludge hauling agreement for the wastewater plant, again, we have a new relationship with a new landlord, and that is working swimmingly well thus far. so they might be getting some of the ADA crosswalks and there'll be some curb and gutter areas, which will all take place before the mill and overlay on that large project. So we'll be meeting with them starting early next week. And then, believe it or not, the warm weather will hit, and there'll be things such as swimming going on this summer, and swim lessons, I think, got posted, is that right, Ashley?
Yep.
So swim lessons, swim lesson signups are online. So after a 50-degree day yesterday, kind of teases us a little bit, I'm not sure we'll get there anytime soon, but it's a sign of spring and summer activities. And those are the real quick summary of highlights. And look forward to, again, getting our max levy done and then getting our budget certified. I appreciate Jane and all her work on that. Happy to answer any questions or things you have for me.
Anything for Jane? And Jane's still a leg and a half worked, that she's done now. All right, thanks, Jane. Under my report, I have a reappointment, an appointment to, reappoint Al Hazelton to the Vets Memorial Auditorium Commission for a three-year term to expire March 19th of 2026. I would look for a motion to approve Al.
Motion.
Second? Motion by Beilenberg, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I would want to ask for a motion to appoint Matt Worthy to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission to a three-year term to expire same day, April 19th of 2026.
Second?
Motion by Shaven, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then I would want to ask for a motion to appoint Matt Worthy to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Commission to a three-year term to expire same day, April 19th of 2026.
Second?
Motion by Shaven, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beilenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, I'll take Todd Maline.
Good evening, council. Actually, tonight, just a couple of items, kind of for the public as well as for you. Just a reminder that the Harley Community High School Student Community Service Day is coming up, and that's going to be on Wednesday, April 19th. So the members of the National Honor Society, they're organizing this event, and so they need people in the public or small businesses to contact them with things that they need done. Small painting projects, yard projects, garage cleanups, whatever it happens to be. And they need to know by April 7th if you have a project that they can do, and you can call Jamie Anderson at 712-755-3101, because she's the one who's taking the project reservations. Also, just a reminder that the next Hotel Motel meeting is going to be April 10th, so any applications for events that'll be taking place in the summer, the fall, to use some of those funds, please get into our office by 5:00 PM on March 31st. Other than that, we had a great board meeting today, we had a really good legislative coffee last Saturday. Don't know if we'll have one in April, because you never know, it just kind of depends on where they are in session, if everything's already been decided differently. No reason to have a coffee other than just to sit around and sip coffee, so. On that, that's it for me. If somebody has a question?
Todd, are we any farther on the home base Iowa?
We are still working on it, so what we are doing is, our home base Iowa is at the county level, so the supervisors have already passed that resolution to, you know, recognize that we are a home base Iowa community. I'm working with Jim Shelton on finalizing paperwork. For those programs, there are, you know, different services or other things that people can offer to veterans to attract them to their community. Like, one of the things that we've done here is the chamber is offering any veteran who opens a new business in Shelby County, and once we cut that ribbon, we'll give you a check for $1,000. Working on a couple of other incentives for people, but yeah, so we're making progress, but we don't have the signs up yet.
Thanks.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
I think Joe had to leave, he had another engagement he had to get to, so we won't have an HMU report. Any other comments from the public tonight? Any comments from the circle? Meeting adjourned.[1778.63]